Order of invitation given by Mr. Gary Stewart and pledge led by Mr. Keith Smith.
Good morning, my Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the very many blessings you have given us. We ask now that you watch over these proceedings and they'll be pleasing you inside. We ask now to watch over the citizens of Scottsboro, the employees of Scottsboro, as they go about their daily lives. We ask that you watch over the military, bring them home safely to their families. Guard God and direct us so in the end we may all come to thee, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In your package you'll find the agenda. I'll hear a motion to approve. Ms. Phillips, do a roll call.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Walmsley?
Here. Now you'll find a copy of the agenda in your package. I'll hear a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keith Smith makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Patrick Stewart, seconds. All in favor, indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You'll also find a copy of previous minutes in your package dated April 23rd. I'll hear a motion to approve previous minutes.
Make a motion.
Ms. Butler makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Gary Stewart, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being on business, we'll move to new business. First, we have Mr. Tommy Haynes, Mr. Lee Livingston. I believe you have a presentation to make, gentlemen.
We needed such a break down.
Okay, Ms. Phillips, will you read?
This is Resolution HJR 286 by Representative Tommy Haynes, commanding officers Parker Henninger and Jordan Shelton of the Scottsboro Police Department on receiving the lifesaving award. Whereas it is with a highest commendation that we recognize Officers Parker Henninger and Jordan Shelton of the Scottsboro Police Department on receiving the lifesaving award. And whereas on February 11th, 2018, Officers Parker Henninger and Jordan Shelton responded to a domestic violence shooting in the 100 block of Cecil Street, after they ascertained the weapon and suspect were secured, Officer Henninger reached the victim who was bleeding profusely due to a gunshot wound in the groin area and applied direct pressure to the wound. Officer Shelton took over the application of direct pressure with blood scans and continued to apply direct pressure to the wound for about 40 miles during the transport from the city of Scottsboro to Huntsville Hospital. And whereas without a moment's hesitation, Officers Parker Henninger and Jordan Shelton placed themselves in the line of peril and saved a life that would have otherwise have perished without proper first aid. And whereas Officers Parker Henninger and Jordan Shelton demonstrated immense courage, diligence, and quick response in a credible situation, their loyalty and wavering commitment to protect and serve the residents of Scottsboro were evidence through their willingness to make the quick and proper response in order to protect a life. Whereas Officers Parker Henninger and Jordan Shelton epitomize the qualities of those who serve and protect, and they're truly deserving of the honor bestowed upon them. Now therefore, be it resolved by the legislature of Alabama, both houses thereof concur that we hereby recognize and honor Officers Parker Henninger and Jordan Shelton and direct that they receive a copy of this resolution as evidence of our admiration and esteem. Signed by Governor Kay Ivey.
Well, here tonight, folks, on at least together, going above and beyond the call of duty, I just want to say that these officers, first responders, they do what they do, they act in a moment's notice, they're problem solvers, it's what they like to do. They don't even think about it. When they roll up on a situation, they just go to work and they get it done. I'm going to promise you one thing right now from experience, they can both tell you there are probably a dozen other places they'd rather be than right here tonight. Because this is not what they see. But sometimes when they go above and beyond, this is what they get. And I'm sorry, y'all went above and beyond and we appreciate you. We had these resolutions done and it's simply from a grateful community. We appreciate you. Thanks. Thanks very much.
Next spring you'll be entered into the Medal of Honor of our firefighters and our military, our police force inside the state of Alabama for an opportunity to win that statewide award also. So, thank you for what you do. Chief, this is the second time we've been here. So obviously you're doing a great job. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, gentlemen. Next is a public hearing and application of Ms. Crystal Chan. That is the time and place for public hearing and application of Ms. Crystal Chan doing business at Senju Sushi Hibachi and Seafood. Ms. Phillips, will you share the particulars, please?
The applicant is Crystal Chan, top of Lawson's retail bear run on and off premise establishment Senju Sushi Hibachi and Seafood located at 24961 Highway 72 East Suite B. There were six businesses surveyed with no objections. The nearest church and school footage requirements were met. Lawson's application is in order. Health fire and building inspections are pending, final inspection, and zoning verification required.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Is there anyone here in addition to the applicant in support of this application? Anyone here in support? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? Anyone here opposed? Thank you. This concludes the public hearing. I'll hear a motion to approve the application of Ms. Crystal Chan doing business at Senju Sushi Hibachi and Seafood.
I'll make that motion pending.
Pending final motion. Mr. Patrick Stewart makes a motion pending final inspection. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Gary Stewart, second. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Consider Resolution 2018-05-19, apply for HSIP funds for Highway 72 and County Park Road intersection. I'll hear a motion to approve the resolution.
Can I make a motion? Table is, or?
You can't.
Okay. Make a motion.
There's been a motion by Mr. Patrick Stewart to table the resolution. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Keith Smith, seconds. All in favor of tabling the resolution, indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we have some discussion on that?
You can't. We already take a vote, but I didn't allow discussions.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I looked at the email and I missed last week's meeting, but I know we discussed this, but there was some other issues and I believe Keith Smith was going to talk about some of those as well. I just would like to see some other drawings, maybe.
How about put it on work session? All right. Next is Consider Catfish Festival Tourism Grant Application. This is in the amount of $2,000 for the catfish festival. I will hear a motion to approve the grant funding.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Butler makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Gary Stewart, second. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Consider Roastberry Rescue Gruff Flushing Request. Is there a motion to be made?
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make the motion that we appropriate $40,000 from our budget as a budget item, and that we also include $30,000 from a tourism fund, which is a total of $70,000. It's not all they asked for, but I feel like it's very close, and hopefully they can grant it 10 more thousand. And then plus what they can get this project done. It needs to be done. They've done wonderful, God, and they work hard, and I think it's up to us to do our part to help.
There's a motion on the floor to approve $40,000 budget amendment and a $30,000 tourism grant funding. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Butler, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. Next is Consider Approval for Storm Shelter Bid and Budget Amendment. If you remember during the budget process, we had set aside $50,000 for storm shelters due to increase in price of steel. The bids have come in at $71,280, $780, $73,780. Mr. Olney has asked for a 10% contingency that would make a budget approval for $81,000. Anything above the 73,780 would require approval from the Council of Presidents. I'll hear a motion to approve this bid.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Patrick Stewart makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Smith, seconds. Any discussion?
It would be very diligent about the $10,000, I would hope.
How long have we been working together, Mr. Smith?
I know you're not enough to know that you will. I just wanted to say it perfectly.
Yes, sir. All in favor, indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will step off the agenda for just a moment. The supplier has made an offer for a second shelter at this price level. They have indicated to us that pricing, if we let this bid today, the price would increase by approximately $15,000, which Mr. Olney was here or the mayor of one. I believe, Ms. Phillips, did they say they needed an answer immediately?
They needed an answer immediately. I tried to reach out to Caitlin to get an official proposal for the second shelter with what was due now. The way I understood it, half of the unit price was due now and half for the next 100 to 120 days. But I tried to confirm that today and didn't have it.
There was some confusion last week at the work session. I believe most of us thought that we had 120 days to make that decision, and after some conversations this week, that's not the case. So I want to make that aware of that. And open the floor if there's a motion. What's the number there? $54,000 something?
$54,000.
So they would require a 50% deposit on a second unit of the structure itself, which would be approximately $27,500. I'll open the floor for a motion to move forward with that.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Patrick Stewart makes a motion to make a down payment on a second structure to be acquired and a location to be approved at a later date. Is there a second?
I'll say it. If or discussion.
Mr. Smith, seconds. Motion and we'll have discussion. Any discussion?
He said we'd have to pay $27,000. How long is that? And at what point? If we don't find a place or we can't come up with a place to build a second, do they keep their $27,000 and be getting that?
Mr. Kenner? If we approve, can we direct the mayor to negotiate the terms of this?
I don't believe that there is anything that I have seen in the documents thus far that would safely protect the city.
So you tell me if we made a down payment that doesn't necessarily lock them into...
It would. We'd have been told these things, but I've not seen anything in writing.
And this is basically the same group, if not same people, that told us we'd give $50,000 and now we're talking $80,000. So the other guy, I don't, it's kind of hard to trust just the word.
I believe in fairness to the supplier, these are not the folks that told us $50,000.
But didn't someone say that the guy that did $50,000, when we did bid more than the person that actually got the bid? Is that not correct? Is that not correct, dear?
I'm not aware of that. That's...
I just...
There's been a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Walmsley?
Visibly yes. Next is Announce Architectural Review Board Appointment. Ms. Phillips?
We only received one letter from Morgan Butler to remain on the architectural review board.
I'll hear a motion to accept the request from Ms. Butler.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keith Smith makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Gary Stewart, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are... Do you have a delegation, Ms. Brenda Ivey?
Thank you, Mr. Walmsley and other members of the council. I'm here on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees to talk with you and share some information about our library. It's unusual for us to come to share things. Usually we come asking for money, but we're not doing that at this time. I would like to express my appreciation to the council for my reappointment to the Board of Trustees. It's a pleasure to serve on this board and to work with the director and employees of the public library. I want to take a few minutes to share with you some of the great things that have and are happening at your library. For the sake of time, and I tend to get off course, so I'm going with my notes, I'm only going to go back and share with you growth and programs that have occurred over the last four or five years. First of all, I want you to know that the library will celebrate its 90th birthday next year. February 28th in 1929, the doors of the first library opened. And Mr. Kenner, I believe your grandfather was a part of that.
He was.
If the young women who were responsible by their hard work, dedication, assistance, and foresight in the establishing of a library for Scottsboro citizens could see the library today, the way it has grown and its reach in the community and the county, they would be amazed at the results of their actions of so many years ago. Since 2013, the library's staff has acquired $248,000 in grant funds for various projects, such as $12,000 in general literacy grants for summer reading programs, $10,000 in LSTA federal funds for library books, $99,000 in the Bynum Foundation grants for various projects such as painting of the library, implementing a self-checkout system for patrons, library books as well as other staff needs, and that's a generous amount from our local foundation. $55,000 in LSTA's strength building youth and family grants for projects for homeschool families, preschool children, parent-child involvement, and partnerships with local schools, and a STEM learning lab. $55,000 in Google Community Foundation grants for upgraded computers, a printing system, and a STEM lab with STEM lab supplies and needs. $7,000 from the Alabama Humanities Foundation grant for community read partnership with Impact Learning Center, and a recent AAUW Community Action grant amounted to $10,000 for a STEM program for 4th grade students in all of the Jackson County schools. And this is a two-year project that will take STEM learning into those classrooms. While Laura Pitts, the director, has been the grant writer for these funds, every employee has been a part of their implementation. They have been the behind-the-scenes people for cutting out thousands of things for programs, such as the summer reading program, for ordering, labeling, packaging books for students participating in the community read program, as well as the drop everything and read program. They take input with their ideas for these grants, as well as other programs. It's taken every staff member working together for these programs to be carried out and to be successful. Pat Chandler is here tonight. She's one of our employees. She's the financial person who makes sure that all the revenues and expenditures for the library are managed correctly, whether it's the proper distribution or allocation of those grant funds, receipt of memorial donations, or expenditures from endowments to the library for specific purposes. She's the one who takes donations of books and makes sure that the donors receive a letter reflecting their donation. She sends letters to donors who made memorial contributions as well as other donations. She determines the action required when damaged books are received, whether they must go for reconditioning, if they must be discarded and replaced with a new copy to complete the collection, and other matters pertaining to book collections and their record keeping. Other staff members work with her to make sure that the library and its book collection is in tip-top condition, and requests for a specific book reaches pay-up or consideration based on funds available for these books. And those are just a few of our duties. Problems at the library have been increased over the last four or five years. One program that the library is currently involved in sponsoring is a result of a grant-funded project through the Institute of Museum and Library Science Grant. This is a three-year grant program, and Scottsboro Public Library is one of 80 libraries in the nation, and the only library in the state selected to take part in this project. This project, a college career and readiness program entitled Building Better Leaders, is a partnership with the Jackson County Extension Office and the library to provide leadership-building skills to students at Scottsboro Junior High School. This program will reach every 7th and 8th grade student over the three-year grant period. Through this project, the Scottsboro Public Library asks mentors other libraries going through the YLSA-funded Future Ready Project. This project is the recipient of the 2018 EBSCO Public Library Rural Library Service Award, and will be presented to Laura and the library at the National Library Committee at New Orleans in June. This is the first recipient for Alabama, and our competition comes from all over the United States, so we're very proud of that award. Some of the other programs offered in addition to summer reading are the D E R program that they do in conjunction with Rotary, the Lunch and Learn programs, Book Club, Office Series, Tin Programs, Game Night, as well as other programs. Martha Abins is another one of our people who is here. Martha is a multi-talented person, and she's the go-to person for a lot of these programs. She helps come up with ideas along with other staff members, and she does a lot of the coordination for these events, as well as demonstration for crafty ideas. She's a whiz. She's also a whiz at computer and social media, and keeps the public aware of what is happening at the library through postings, sending out calendars of activities to patrons, and other helpful information. She's an energetic, hard-working, creative addition to our staff, and we're fortunate to have her at the library. And those are just a few of her duties. As I mentioned earlier, Laura Pitts, also here, is our director, and she is the energy who searches for grant applications that have to fund programs at the library. Her talent lies in being able to see where the library needs to go to be the best it can be and to meet the needs of the community. She sees the reach of the library beyond the physical walls of that building. She's aware of the needs of the community by providing computer assistance when patrons need to make use of the computer lab for such things as compiling resumes, filing on job applications, providing technology and computer assistance and access to those who don't have that technology. She's energetic in finding new ways to meet the needs of patrons, whether it's providing games for families to enjoy either at the library or to check out for home, providing a sewing machine so that patrons can use the library for small projects, a T-shirt embossing machine so that someone can create one of a kind, or a group can create T-shirts for their special event, using a 3D printer in the STEM layout, having an heirloom seed collection, providing fun activities for kids and their families, as well as enriching activities for adult patrons. She sees the library as a link between schools, as well as career readiness programs in collaboration with agencies such as the Impact Learning Center. Laura's a regular presenter of our programs and projects at the Alabama Library Association, annual conferences, the Association of Small and Rural Libraries, national conferences, as well as presentations at the Association of Middle Level Education American Library Association Convention, my LSA panel. Laura also serves on the Alabama Public Library LSTA Grant Council reviewing state grant application, and also serves as a member at large for the northern part of the state on the Alabama Library Association's Executive Council. She's a very busy, energetic, and forward-thinking director. Her duties are limitless. I want to share with you a few of our statistics very quickly, and I know I'm taking a lot of your time. But in 2017, we had 14,487 library cardholders. library card holders. There were three hundred and seventy-two library programs with the attendance of nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three. Circulation of materials was ninety-seven thousand and twenty-nine units. And one hundred and thirty-seven, one hundred and four visits were made to the library. That's an awful lot for our little library. Over the last five years, the library has seen a twenty-nine percent increase in library card holders, a twenty-three percent increase in circulation materials, ninety-eight percent increase in programs offered, an eighty-nine percent increase in program attendance, and fifty-six percent increase in library visits. That tells us something is going well at the library and it's the white thumb. Our library has over thirty-eight thousand books for adults, teens, and children. Patrons have access to almost sixty-six thousand ebooks and e-audio books. We have eleven hundred DVDs, twenty-five hundred audio books for adults, teens, and children, but we also have nearly thirteen hundred books that are in a storeroom because we don't have enough shelves to put all the books on. They are cataloged and they are available. They're just not on the shelves. Um, we have four-ten computers in our computer lab that are used daily by the public. And in our STEM lab, we have over five hundred items that include everything from three-D printers, robotics, coding, board games, cake pans, and a sewing machine as well as other things. Our library continues to strive to meet all the needs of our patrons and to move forward to be the go-to place in the community. We strive to grow our future patrons by encouraging creative programming and activities for young children who will be the future for our library. We have to hook them now while they're young because if we don't, they won't be our patrons later. They are our next generation. Finally, I want to make you aware of the special recognition that two of our staff members received uh in the last year. Laura was awarded the twenty-seventeen Distinguished Service Award from the Alabama Library Association and Pat Chandler was awarded the twenty-eighteen Paralibrarian Award from the Alabama Library Association just a couple of months ago. We're very proud for both of those ladies. And last week, they were also recognized uh by Senator Steve Livingston with Senate resolutions recognizing their contributions and achievements at the library. So that was um a wonderful event for them too. The Board of Trustees is proud of both of these women and their recognition for their contributions to our library. And we are equally proud of the employees who go beyond what is expected and who strive every day to make the Scottsboro Public Library the best library in the state and the nation. We, as a board of trustees, are proud to work with them to help them meet all of the goals that they have for the library. I thank you for your time and particularly for your support of the library. And if you don't mind, Ms. Phillips, I will give you these handouts which summarizes some of the facts for each member.
Thank you, Ms. Abey. We'll move to reports. Mayor's not here, Ms. Butler. Mr. Patrick Stewart?
I just have a couple of things. The part of the D.B. Cohen Bridge that Angel Chaney and Glenn had worked on, I think it was delivered to the high school uh last week. So, um, I don't know if y'all seen it or not. It was pretty neat. Um, the other thing was uh the six-year uh people team that I was coaching this year, we won county championship, so I was proud of the, the kids, the, the parents, I say the boy out there, grandparents. Um, they uh, we went the regular season, we, we nine-and-oh and uh pretty much dominated every game. I think our average score was nineteen versus three for the opponents and then we got to the final game against section. I can't say enough for them. They uh, they pretty much put it to us in the first few innings. We uh, we had a lot of adversity and um there were some kids, just like six-year-olds, they didn't have any idea if they were winning or losing. The ones that did know they were losing, they were crying. The girls out there wearing their hair in ponytail and we and Harvey was out there putting a ponytail in one of the girl's hair. Basically, we came back one, twenty-two, twenty, so I'm very proud of them and um parents. It was a great season. It's all happened.
Mr. Stewart? Mr. Gary Stewart?
Uh, no, just thank everyone for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
I've got just a couple of things. Uh, one, we have with us tonight, uh, Mr. Jackson Powles. Uh, Mr. Powles is working towards his Eagle Scout. Uh, we appreciate you being here and thank you for your, for your efforts and, and to work, working that, for that honorable goal. Uh, I also want to say, they're not here, but congratulations to Officer Henninger and, and Jordan. Uh, we appreciate the dedication and, and the work that they, that they do. We appreciate uh Representative Haynes and Senator Livingston uh recognizing their efforts. Uh, of course, Ms. Pitts and, and her staff at the library, we're certainly appreciative of, of, of your efforts in our, in our community. Uh, I'll make an announcement that there'll be no meeting on uh May twenty-eighth uh because of Memorial Day. On the twenty-first, we'll have a work session and a, and a council meeting. And I believe that's all I have. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. With that, I'll hear a motion to adjourn. Mr. Smith makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Patrick Stewart, second. All in favor in case of by saying aye?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.